Evening ladies and gentlemen. Before we start, if we hear a fire alarm, could we exit the doors that you see over there, the brown doors? We muster at the wall near the funeral directors. Could we have all phones on silent or mute, please? Thank you. Before we start, could we be upstanding for a minute's silence for Mr Bill Hayes-Allen, a former mayor of the town between 2002, 2003, who served the town with dedication? Thank you. Thank you very much. Number one, to note apologies for absence, including councillor Peg for apologies for the 7th of October 2025.
Good evening, Mr Mayor. I have apologies from councillor C Piotr and councillor Dixon, both due to ill health. I'd like to apologize to councillor Peg for not giving apologies at the last meeting, which were given before the meeting. I also have apologies from councillor Bullen, councillor Ratcliffe, councillor Osborne and county councillor White.
Number two, to receive declarations of interest and consider requests of dispensations. Members to declare any interest, including disposable pecuniary interests they may have in agenda items that accord with the requirements of the town council's code of conduct. Therefore, I declare receipts page three, please. Councillor Levers?
I'd like to say that I'm a paid-up member of Discover Downham for agenda point 11.4.
Nobody else? Thank you. Number three, to approve the minutes of the full council meeting held on the 7th of October 2025. Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Damon, seconder, councillor Leach, all those in favour? Yep, thank you. Number four, public forum. As we've heard, 4-1 county councillor and borough councillors, we have none. 4-2 police, none. 4-3 public, members of the public. Anybody wish to speak, please? No? Okay. Number five, mayor's announcements. October 8th, I was at Circus at Denver. October 10th, cancer surgery with councillor Tony Leach. October 12th, civic service at Hon Stanton. 14th, a visit to the Boys Brigade. There were 15 boys there that evening. 17th, my mayor's quiz. We raised £400 on that night. The 21st, Kings Lynn Mayor's charity Trafalgar supper. The 23rd, chairman's coffee morning, Fensland Council. 24th, 2025 poppy appeal launch. 27th, Art Circle 50 years birthday and exhibition. Many pictures were sold that week. Later that same day, Dementia Cafe 10th birthday celebrations. Cut the cake with Kings Lynn Mayor Andy Bullen. So two lots of cake that day. 28th, Rebecca Harrington M A B A with honours. Harrington's performing arts, the magic of musicals. All the children and adults gave a very professional slick performance. Had a very surprising shot with the dads. The children had no ideas of secret rehearsals and the frozen sketch with Let It Go with a lovely blonde wig went down a storm. October 30th, Downham Market Town Council free Halloween fun day for children. Many thanks to all the councillors, staff and family members for stewarding. It made the day run smoothly. And thank you to Mr Pumpkin, whoever that is, who appeared again. The weather was very good to us and the fancy dress gets harder every year to Dutch. October 31st, the Grange Halloween Fun Party with music with the residents. November 1st, Denver Fireworks 2025. Wet star sat in the car for half an hour but stopped nicely in time for the fireworks. Deputy mayor and myself had another tricky time with the fancy dress for under 12s. November 4th, early today, we had another meeting of our youth advisory board. We have a games evening on Thursday, November 6th and December 4th, both on Thursdays, 4 till 6 for youngsters, 11 and upwards. And finally, my next quiz is on December 12th. It's a festive quiz. All the questions are on Christmas, seven for a 7.30 stir, £5 each with teams of four, raffle a pound a strip. This will be open to all grandparents, mums and dads and youngsters too. Come along for a good evening's fun. Thank you. Number six, to approve the minutes of the following committees. 6-1 Planning Committee. Councillor Damon.
May I ask you as a council to approve the minutes as published for the planning committee held the 24th of September 2025?
Seconder, councillor Brewer, all those in favour, please? Thank you. 6-2 Property Committee, councillor Jordan.
I'd like to ask the full council if they'll accept the minutes of the property committee of the 1st of October 2025, please?
Seconder, councillor Lewis, all those in favour? Thank you. 6-3 Human Resources Committee. Councillor Peg, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Can I ask council to approve the Human Resources Committee minutes of the 6th of August 2025? Thank you.
I do have a note here that they were not approved and withdrawn, but...
Councillor Peg, can I just confirm, they weren't approved at the next committee meeting, were they? I don't believe they were approved at the September committee meeting by the committee. Are you happy for me to withdraw them? Because I don't believe they were approved. I was going to get them approved on the 11th.
Okay, sorry about that, mistake. Six for Governance and Finance Committee. Councillor Hobbs?
Yes, could I propose that we accept the Governance and Finance Committee minutes from the 14th of August, please?
Seconder, I'll do that. All those in favour, please?
Okay, so one against, two against. Lovely, thank you.
Seven, to agree request from councillor Dixon and councillor Brewer to join Governance and Finance Committee. There are three vacancies at the moment. Could I have a proposal for that, please?
Can I propose?
Councillor Hobbs, all second. All those in favour then, please? Thank you. And against? I appear to have the casting vote, which is a bit tricky. But I'll agree, because we need three vacancies and we've got two councillors who wish to go on the committee side. Thank you. Number eight, to consider grants request and agree response. 8-1 West Norfolk Rowing Club. You have had all the details. Anybody wish to comment on that? Councillor Levers?
I suggest that we do grant them £500. As West Norfolk Rowing Club, I'm sure have members from Downham Market.
Yep. Anybody else wish to comment? Do we need, want to go straight into a proposal then, please? Yep, councillor Levers propose? Okay, well, on the letter it's 589.
I just thought that we could give them 500.
Anybody else wish to comment on the figures?
I'd propose, or I would suggest that we give them a full amount...
Can't you hear? Have you put your mic on?
Oh, sorry, I have got it on. Maybe it's not near enough, sorry. I don't see there's any problem with the full amount that they've asked for.
Okay. So we've got 500 and 589. So proposal for the 500 then. To councillor Levers, seconder on that? Right, all in favour for the 500 then? Yep, yep. So that's passed then, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. I thought that the councillor over there proposed that it was the full amount. What happened?
They were voting on mine.
They were voting on vows? Okay.
Yeah, to be honest, I wasn't particularly...
Go on, the first proposal first, which was 500. If that vote had failed, we would have gone on the second vote. That's how it works. 8-2 Singers Inspired, again, you've had the information. They are asking for 560. Councillor Kane?
I don't understand why we're giving them anything, in honesty, because the only reason we're giving them some money is, as far as I could see, was for, to pay the person that teaches them how to sing. And she's already getting paid. That's what I, that's what I got from the details that we got from...
Having been and seen the group rehearsing, this lady comes from London every week to teach the group to sing. She's a professional London singer, operatic singer, and she teaches them all the harmonies which they otherwise wouldn't get. So they do need the professional to do it, yeah.
Yeah, I do understand that.
And if you've seen, if you went to the VE Day and saw them actually perform, you'll see how the harmonies do work.
Yeah, I see that, but she's been paid sort of quite a substantial bit anyway, so... And everybody else that's involved is a volunteer, so I personally...
Well, she's based in London, she has the trouble of coming back down, so... Anybody else got comment on that? Councillor Damon?
What is the odd amount for? This is the second one that's shown up in these two grants. Is it VAT or something? Do we know?
We don't know. No?
Because I'm, it seems an odd amount. That's why I'm asking the questions, because this one has also got an odd amount. I'm wondering if it's VAT or something, if there's some particular reason for it to be that figure.
As we say, we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Levers?
I would like, I would like to propose, when they've finished the discussion, to propose that we give them 500 as well, as they have performed at all our events and I think they're truly worth it. I understand what councillor Kane is saying, but they will improve and that'd be better for us when they come, et cetera.
Okay, any other proposals then? No? So we need a seconder for that proposal then, please? Councillor Brewer, all those in favour then for £500 for Singers Inspired? Yep? No, against? Yeah, okay. 8-3 Melody Allsorts of Downham. Councillor Damon?
I understand that we already give them a form of grant in the form of reduced rental for the hiring of the town hall. Is that correct?
For this year, but what we're thinking of for next year is, think ahead for the budget for '26, '27 if minded, because they will not be getting that if they go for the grant. So they're going for the grant instead of next year's discount. Have they been notified of that? Yeah, they're quite willing for that, yeah. Okay.
That's okay.
Councillor Levers?
We obviously don't have the full amount that they're asking for. We will only have £1,500 if I'm correct?
Yep. Any other comments? Councillor Moynes?
So the grant they're looking for is how much?
£3,000.
They're asking for £3,000, but we've only got one and a half thousand, so...
Right. And the hire of the hall, what they discount on or...
They already get the 10% discount, so...
So the grant, the grant is substantial more than the, than the actual discount on the rent then?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Like I said, we can't say yes for next year because the budget is not set, but if you are minded, we could think of that to put in the budget for next year. Any other comment? Councillor Lewis?
Is this going to clean our grant pot out with what we've, what they're asking for?
You have £1,500 available in the grant pot, so any additional to that would come directly out of reserves.
All right, okay.
Okay, nobody wants to do a debate, so do we have a proposal on table then, please? Councillor Lewis?
I would like to propose that we give them £1,000 and leave 500 for any charity between now and the end of the financial year.
Second, yep. All those in favour of that then, please? All those against, please? Motion carried. Number nine, to discuss requests from the Downham Football Club and agree response. Again, you've had all the information for this. It's to do with a grant for their tenants. Councillor Levers?
It's for a lease.
Somebody didn't read it.
It's, it's for a secure tenancy agreement so they can apply for a grant to help with the maintenance, technical maintenance on the pitches.
Okay.
Because they haven't got a year at the minute.
Okay, well, what we have to think about, this is feels in trust, this land, and we are not allowed to do anything to that land, agreement or tenancy or lease, without getting permission from the feels in trust. This is all on the website, so we need to ask for permission if we're going to consider it. Also, the land is for the community and much as I support the football club, which I think they do a fantastic job, it is for use by the community. And if we give them a tenancy agreement, we are saying that one sport will be played on there by one group of people when all of Downham Market can go and use the facility. So I don't think at this time we can allow that.
Yeah, please. Okay, you are correct, but there is precedence because in the last 10 years, they've had a lease in that time. So we would be okay for one year to, no, to get a grant. We, we would still have to get permission before we've physically given them a year. Councillor Jordan? Could you push your microphone?
Firstly, Mr Mayor, can you actually say when this lease was? Because as far as I'm aware, I don't have any lease. We've never, so this has suddenly, this has just come out.
So apparently within the last seven years, all our clerk has been here, he's been with, within the maintenance...
Well, I'm sorry, but I've never ever heard that.
JCC Working Party agreed that, yeah.
But we've never had a JCC Working Party until the other week, that was set up. And I'd also like to say that the, we agreed to set a working party up, which you've no going against, because they haven't had a chance to go through this. But could someone please show council a copy of this lease, what's been supposedly in the last seven years? Because this is the first I've ever heard of it.
Councillor Peg?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Jordan. I've been on the council quite a while and I've never heard of a lease and I've never seen a lease for them. There was a big meeting and I can't tell you exactly when it was. And the football club was there and they were asking for a lease and it was turned down then. That wasn't that long ago. So I can't add any more to that, that there is no lease. It might be a lease by agreement, but that's about all.
Apparently pre-Covid, sorry, I'm having my legal discussion and I'm now answering legal. Pre-Covid, there was an agreement for £250, but we don't know when. We don't know if we can find it, but that's what has been suggested, so... Councillor Brewer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I address the clerk directly on this? So that we are crystal clear what's going on here, because that is what we employ the clerk for. She is our RFO and our legal adviser. Regarding this lease, it's for a one-year term. Is that correct? It doesn't tie us into anything?
No, so it's a security of tenure document being requested by the Football Association. The Downham Town Football Club wished to apply for some grant funding in order to improve the current pitches that are there. The grass is not growing in all the patches and this grant will allow them to improve the amount of grass and the quality of the grass and sort out the drainage issues. Because they don't have a tenancy agreement on there currently, they can't get this grant. Therefore, this document gives a security of tenure, which says that if there is no lease on there of ten years' length, or there is a break clause in the favour of the landlord, that the landowner would sign this document. Absolutely right. We Fields in Trust would have to have run by it as well to say that we do not plan to remove the football club from that land within the next 12 months.
Next year, okay. Can I ask? May I ask how much, how often the football club use that field currently?
My understanding is seven days of the week.
Right, they're up there.
They're in the evenings certainly, Monday to Friday, and they use the mornings. I certainly know of Saturday and Sunday. I don't know about the afternoons.
So the football club use the land a lot for the good of the town? Well, for the football-playing town. I've just, we need to be mindful that yes, the land is for community use, but we're saying that alongside applying for a grant for a 3G pitch, which is something that can only be used by one sport and will also have to be locked away when it's not in use by the said sport. You have to access, you have to pay to access it. So it seems in one hand we're saying, well, that's for community use and no to this, but on the other hand, we want to put on a 3G pitch. That doesn't seem to be joined up thinking for me. Now, for me, it's currently majority use for football. If they can secure a grant to improve the grass and the pitch, then I'm happy for that. If it doesn't tie us in for years ahead, then I'm happy with that.
Can I just answer about on the Working Party? Just in answer to the Working Party question, it was sent to the Working Party, which I hope members can confirm, it was sent on the 16th of October. I had no reply from any of the Working Party members. This needs to be approved, if it is going to be approved, because it needs to go in front of Fields in Trust as well and we have Christmas coming. And the grant ends on the 31st of March, hence why it is in front of full council. It's not for the want of trying.
Councillor Damon?
Can I ask a question? Did I hear you say that they're paying £250 a year rent?
No, he didn't say that. They paid £250 for, yeah.
When I joined the council, councillor Damon, as part of the charity part of the town council, there was an agreement in place and they paid £250 a year. And that included they were responsible for grass cutting. That came to an end when the Working Party broke up. And there is currently no agreement on there, other than the use of the toilets that are connected to the JCC building. Well, plumbing.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry. The Working Party was broken up. It didn't break up, it was broken up.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into an argument about that. It no longer exists, so.
But they must have had an agreement there at that time to be paying £250, otherwise they would have been generous with the donation.
That's what I'm saying. There was an agreement, but obviously I wasn't the clerk at the time. So I don't know whether that document still exists. There is not a document in place now, that is for sure.
Sorry, sorry. If they come to an agreement, surely they'd have a copy. Perhaps we could ask them to produce it.
Yeah, I don't know whether Sandra's still around, but I can certainly ask for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the comment I'm making.
Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, just a couple of things. With regards to this and talking about drainage, what drainage are they talking about? Are they talking about verti-drain? Or are they talking about doing proper under-draining, going across the pitch or whatever else? And also, there's one question that I think the football club have got to answer. Are they staying in town or are they moving out of town? Because there's so many rumours going around this town at the moment that they're supposed to be moving and what have you. And it's a pity they weren't a representative here tonight to speak on this item as well, so that we as a council know what they are actually doing as well.
I can't answer the comment regarding the future of the club. I'm not party to what the club are doing. But regarding the drainage, that is the bit where the football club go into our external drainage, the bit where they've got the porter cubbing on with the toilets at the rear of the JCC. This is nothing to do with new drainage.
No, because they're talking about, well, it's drainage for the toilet facilities and not for drainage, as in on the pitches to stop them flooding and.
Oh, no, 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 sorry. This is, I don't know what the machine is called, but it's a spiky machine that helps the pitches drain, not a drainage system.
No, right, okay.
Councillor Pegg?
Thank you. Sorry. I'm a little bit concerned about the, this agreement that we've got here. And if you go right to the end, it says key information and it says the site. Point two, I'll fill in a little bit as I go through, if that's all right with you. Downmarket Town Council knows of no current reason why the current SOT with the football club would not be extended beyond its current terms and no current reason or intention to activate a break clause for the above. And GPMF funding will be signing up to the Football Foundation Terms and Conditions for a period of 10 years. So is this going to be one year or is it going to be continual?
Excuse me, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Lewis, we've had one meeting with the football.
I was going to ask you a question.
Do we need to put this towards our Working Party, do you think?
I think we do. And I think there's two others on air. Are you in agreement that we should, this should come back to the Working Party?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Hobbs, you're on the Working Party as well.
I think we'll have an emergency meeting and have a discussion.
I think we need to speak to councillor Poit when he's fit as well. He's part of that and go from there. Just one other question. Can I ask whereabouts we are with the feasibility study on said 3G pitch?
The application was submitted by the deadline in June. I've heard nothing further from it.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to say the improvements to the pitch, if we facilitate this improvement, it'll benefit the town and the community in general. It's not just benefiting the football club. But I think it is a good idea to discuss it in the Working Party.
Councillor Jordan?
Working Party now, please.
This is me, councillor Lewis, councillor Hobbs, councillor Poit and councillor Brewer.
Oh, I was just wondering, because I thought it was only four. It was two from property, I believe, and two from governance and finance and.
And a member from the General Council.
All right. So when was that decided then? Because I don't recall that one. No, it wasn't. It should be, as far as I'm aware, councillor Hobbs, councillor Lewis, councillor Poit and yourself. So.
Your terms of reference, I've got councillor Brewer in, yeah.
All right, okay. Cool, that's been changed.
Councillor Leavis, did you have anything? No, I've already done something. Right. So we'll take that back to the Working Party and discuss that. Okay. So on to number 10, to consider the following motion. A motion put forward by councillor Lane, councillor Hobbs, councillor Perkins, councillor Dixon and councillor Campbell Robb. Would councillor Perkins like to lead on this then, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the council has got itself in a problematical situation as regards tenders and contracts recently, which I believe personally has tarnished the reputation of the council, hence the motion. The Nolan principles of public life are selflessness, integrity, objectivity, accountability, openness, honesty and leadership. Unfortunately, I believe we've fallen well below those standards. The motion before you aims to address this. It shouldn't be contentious at all and it aims to re-establish the trust between the council and the people that we represent. Many councils up and down the country have similar standing orders to ensure that they adhere to the Nolan principles. I move the motion.
Okay. Councillor Damon?
I'm sorry, but I must object to the motion, because to the, regarding the previous conversation we've just had about the JCC, installing this motion would totally counteract working with the Football Association and that likes of them if we bring this into power. I'm sorry. And it stops councillors from bringing and having little contracts with outside people to assist in the encouragement of the youth of the town and the children of the town to carry out various things. So I think it will foul that. That's my comment. Thank you.
Councillor Leach?
Yeah, I've got problems with this as well. We already have procedures, rules and regulations governing this situation. As long as we adhere to them, there's not a problem. I have great problems with telling local businesspeople they can't stand for local government and telling councillors who they can and can't do business with. This is totally undemocratic. I don't like it at all. Like you say, we've already got rules, regulations and procedures in place. As long as they're adhered to, like every other council in Britain, there's not a problem.
Councillor Pegg?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Firstly, did we have this seconded?
We haven't got right into that.
Sorry?
We're still having the discussion at the moment. The standing orders say that you need five people to put it forward, which they did, within advance of the agenda.
Sorry, overturning previous motions.
I'm sorry, Mr Mayor, I'm not aware of needing a seconded to have a discussion on a item on the. I am to have a seconded once you've made the proposal and moved it forward, but we're still in the discussion stages, to my understanding.
We need a proposal seconded.
If you look up standing orders, you need a proposer and a seconded before it can go through.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Later on, we go for a proposer and seconded.
Councillor Brewer said she'll second it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr, uh, councillor Pegg. I have written down here, proposer and seconded. We hadn't got to that stage, okay? But councillor Brewer has now seconded it. So all in favour, please? Well, thank you, councillor Pegg. We're still in discussion. So anybody else need to discuss on this, please?
Councillor Brewer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm still a bit confused about the seconded, whole seconded thing. We've got the clerk and a deputy clerk here who both disagree with that. But we are where we are. I'm happy to second it, just so that we can have a debate. With regards, I do agree with what councillor Perkins has said, because at the beginning of this year, the financial year, we agreed terms of reference for both the Governance and Finance and the Property Committee. The Governance and Finance Committee made a decision regarding a contract which was within their remit, didn't need to be ratified by full council, and yet... I'm sorry, is there a problem, councillor Leavis? Am I allowed to?
Excuse me, I haven't said anything.
No.
Sorry, not having understood.
I expect to be listened to with respect.
Both of you.
Is it appropriate to attack somebody? No, I expect to be listened to with respect as a councillor. I was not attacking somebody. I was asking if I may continue, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Moyes, please don't get in the middle of this. Thank you. Right, councillor Brewer, please continue.
So as I said, Governance and Finance made a decision and for some reason, the Property Committee were unhappy with that and they jumped through procedural hoops to overturn the decision. So they then put somebody different forward for the contract. And now again, we are having to look at, so where are we? November the 4th, we are having to look at terms of reference for committees that were decided months ago. And this is where public perception comes into account. What do you think the public think of this? And I do agree with councillor Perkins's proposal and I will be voting in line with it.
Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, regarding this, that from Governance and Finance should have actually come back to full council for, as a recommendation and to be resolved at full council. It never was. So that's where some of the confusion has lied and that, so, and that was why the Property Committee stepped in. It should have come from, and the deputy mayor has said it should have come back to full council for their sort of say on it, and it never did. And why didn't it?
Councillor Jordan?
I'd just like to say that councillor Hobbs did actually confirm that in the chair's meeting, that he was at impression that it was going to full council and it never did.
Councillor Hobbs?
Yes, I did confirm that there was some confusion. I was not aware that we had made a decision. I thought we'd made a recommendation in Governance and Finance and that it would be ratified by full council.
Well, I have to say, Mr Deputy Mayor, it's very poor of the chair not to know.
Councillor Jordan, please. You'll be out of the room if you carry on.
This is a point of order. You interrupted me there.
How point of order it is. You'll be out of the room next time.
Oh, will I? Point your gabble at me again, mate.
Councillor Hobbs?
I will point the gabble. I am in full control of the meeting and you're excluded. Thank you.
Yes. Having reread the terms of reference for Governance and Finance, we did have the authority to make that decision. However, I was under the impression that it had to be ratified by full council. That was not necessarily the case. Yes, there was a decision and it was overturned and I accept that there was a vote to do that. What I am concerned about here, and this is why I've added my name to the signatories, is public perception. Nobody is saying there's anything going on that shouldn't be going on. Nobody's even talking about corruption because it's not raised, it's not raised its ugly head. There is no suggestion of that. There is only a suggestion of what it might look like to the public if a councillor is given contracts from the, from the Property Committee and it might be better to just keep the two separate. This is all we're saying. Thank you.
Councillor Pegg, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this council's got to be very careful, because there are procurement legislation on this and we're not following it really by putting this in. And the public procurement terms of 215, 2015, sorry. It says that equal treatment, all suppliers must be treated fairly and without discrimination, ensuring that everyone has an equal opportunity to participate in the procurement process. Following that, in 2024, there's another one came through, which doesn't override that one, the 215 one, but it adds to it, but it doesn't really make any difference to what I'm saying here. But it also says the CPF allows for flexibility in how you carry out your tender. You must still follow the key principles, including equal treatment of suppliers. Now, if this isn't followed. Now, if this isn't followed, suppliers can go to the Competition and Markets Authority. I'll read this out. This has come from solicitors. Where are we? Not just big corporations, but it's small businesses and startups, and it covers councils and government bodies that your company has. If the CMA finds that your company has engaged in anti-competitive behaviour, the consequences, excuse me, can be severe. It says think hefty fines, legal actions and lasting damage to your reputation. I'm just throwing that in for everybody's information. We would be possibly breaking several regulations.
councillor Brough, you had your hand up after that. No, okay. councillor Levers?
I'd just like to say that my reaction was nothing to do with... It was the fact that we were now going over the same old ground, and I didn't want, didn't think it was right to bring it all up again and just to go into a vote etcetera with a little bit of discussion, but everything's been brought up from the same meeting again, from the last meeting. That was why I was very disappointed.
councillor Perkins?
I think this meeting has showed why I brought the motion. We have a councillor who has contracts with the council, who is actually speaking on the motion here tonight. That is against all of the Nolan principles. I rest my case.
councillor Diamond?
I stand by what I said and I reiterate it. And that's what I'm saying, is I would have to vote against it. councillor Levers, you've spoken two or three times. councillor Campbell, right?
I have to say, I agree with councillor Perkins. It is, it could be perceived as being corrupt, giving contracts to, let's be honest here, the, giving contracts to councillors who happen to be voting on those contracts. Not voting, but definitely, you know, may have influence.
All right, that's it. councillor Moyes?
What difference does it make? Because he could watch it on a video, so... On his phone, you know?
councillor Leach?
No? Okay.
I've been here for 40 years. I've seen dozens and dozens of local businesspeople on this council, and they've all done business with this council as well, and they've all been legal and above board, and they've benefited this town immensely. We're going to like ban the most important people in the town from being councillors. It's absolutely ridiculous.
councillor Kane?
I agree in principle with councillor Perkins, but I do believe that councillor Peg has brought up quite an important issue, and we really need to look into that, I think, before we do anything else because we need to find out whether that's actually a legal issue.
My legal legalia says there are no legal things that have been suggested, but she's welcome to take it away and look into it, see if there are any help.
Sorry, just so it's on record, I have a legal piece of legislation that says that this is okay to proceed with. However, I take on board councillor Peg's point, and therefore I'm happy if council directs me to go away and ask a solicitor with the legislation that I've been provided with and the procurement and see where they position themselves.
councillor Brough?
Yeah, I think I recall councillor, sorry, thank you for letting me speak again. I recall councillor Perkins said that other councils across the country do have this written in their code of conduct, so I find it highly unlikely they're all acting illegally. And also, would it be worthwhile contacting borough legal services on this matter as well? So we have a few different views on the legality of it. Please, thank you.
councillor Perkins?
Yeah. Having said we should act by the law and act by the Nolan principles, it would be churlish of me not to say that the town clerk should go away and check the legal position. So I'm quite happy not to put the motion and for the town clerk to check on the legal position.
Okay. I think if you vote on it today, rather than keep postponing it. There's a motion and a seconded. Let's vote on it.
councillor Julie Poet?
Yes, I agree with councillor Leach. The motion's on the table. You have a seconded, and I think here and now we should do a vote.
I thought you could only speak three times. Sorry. I think given...
Through the chair, please. Thank you.
Right, after much debate, me and the clerk suggest strongly that we take this away and check the legality of it without taking part in a vote tonight, if that's all right.
Point of order.
councillor Peg, point of order, go on.
Thank you. It's been proposed, it's been seconded. It either goes ahead for a vote or the proposer has to withdraw it with the seconded agreeing to that withdrawal.
councillor Brough?
I think given the debate and the new legal highlights that have been, legal concerns that have been highlighted, I would wish to withdraw my second of this proposal, please.
councillor Perkins?
And I withdraw the proposal.
So, okay, lovely. Thank you. So we now go on to item 11. To consider recommendations from Governance and Finance Committee and agree actions. 11.1, that the existing terms of reference for Governance and Finance Committee be amended to show that all decisions relating to contracts, leases and licenses be ratified by full council following recommendation from members proposed. councillor Lane, secretary councillor Hobbs, and all were in favour on that note.
councillor Levers, I think it's first.
I'm concerned that 11.1 and 12.1 are conflicting. I would like the, someone, if it's possible, Mr Mayor, that we could have an explanation because 12.1 is from property, is saying that they would like to be responsible for all property assets, contracts, leases etcetera. But 11.1 from governance is saying relating to contract, leases and licenses, and they're talking about ratified, which property would do anyway. I really don't see much difference between it. I'd like an explanation about 11.1. Thank you.
If you notice, all elevens are from Governance and Finance Committee. Chair of Governance and Finance, councillor Hobbs?
I really don't see a conflict here. We're just talking about an amendment to show that all the decisions that we make are ratified by full council. I can't imagine anybody has any objections to that.
councillor Jordan?
Can I just answer that point?
Yes.
No, we had authority under delegated powers there to pass that motion. What I'd been confused about is I thought we were just recommending to full council when in fact we did actually have the authority to take that decision, which we took.
councillor Jordan, please, through the chair.
May I continue? I just wanted to say that having reread, I mean, I'm repeating myself now, but having reread the terms of reference for Governance and Finance, we're actually making it a little bit easier here. We're not saying that we're going to take a decision and the decision stands. We're changing that. We're saying when we take a decision on Governance and Finance, it still comes back to full council to give it the nod and say it's okay. It's not the final word. That was the confusion before, and we're just taking away that confusion.
councillor Betty Moyes?
I'm starting to feel like it should be a full council thing completely because if you're having a discussion and bringing it back to full council, it may as well be full council that make the decision in the first place.
All committees come back to full council. Betty Moyes, Chair, all decisions come back to full council for ratification. And, so...
Okay, right. councillor Diamond?
I'm sorry, I've just reread this, and it says to be ratified by full council following recommendation from members. And as far as I know, as a councillor, I'm a member of the council. Does that include me or just? Members of Governance and Finance, yeah. Can we have the word of Governance and Finance behind it, please, to make it clear? Please.
councillor Julie Poet?
Yes, thank you. How would this work in practice, the awarding of contracts? If I go to an example, the recent drain at the JCC, this was in Property Committee in their budget. They produced the specs. They then invited contractors to quote. The quotes came in, they decided who would be best to do the work, how it wanted to be done, and they then awarded the contracts to the contractor. Now, if Governance and Finance are going to get involved, how is that actually going to work in practice? Because the Property Committee does a lot of work. They do the car parks, they do... And normally, they award the contracts because they know what needs to be done, and they have insight of the practical requirements. So now Governance and Finance want to get involved, how are they going to do it?
Anybody else? Yep, councillor Hobbs?
councillor Poet's made a very good point there, and it boils down to an old saying, horses for courses, and if the Property Committee are of that nature and knowing how work should be completed and what the spec requires, then why is it going to somebody who isn't necessarily aware of that knowledge? And I think that's quite dangerous.
councillor Peg?
Sorry, I'm out of your view. Thanks. I'm not sure when it is, but we've, the Property Committee Terms of Reference, I think that's coming up in a minute for ratification. And what it says on here is the committee has responsibility for expenditure relating to the following assets as per budget approved by full council on the 14th of January, and according to financial... So it's got the authority to spend its money and do the contracts or whatever it wants, within financial constraints.
councillor Hobbs, yeah?
It seems to me that, of course, Property Committee does need to have authority to spend money. Things come up, things have to be repaired, replaced. The money has to be spent wisely after a discussion in the Property Committee and decisions made, and those decisions don't have to come back to full council for ratification. I'm beginning to think, why would Governance and Finance, who've spent at least as much time going through some complicated contracts, complicated tenders, why does everything then have to be ratified by full council? Is it not? It's becoming one rule for one and one rule for the other. So if Property Committee can make decisions and not have to come back to full council, why can't Governance and Finance have the same authority? I am going against this...
councillor Moyes?
...suggestion.
You can't have two committees trying to do the same job. So property has got to be the one to do it because property know what they're looking at. You can't have two committees trying to do the same job. It's just not going to work. It's just impossible. So we need to stick to property, what I've been doing, the properties of this town for, I don't know how many years. You can't have two running it. So, I'm sorry, I'm against that.
councillor Levers?
That's what I was trying to say. If we could have in 11.1 that this excluded contracts that were relevant to the Property Committee, councillor Poet said it much more eloquent than I did, but that was what I was on about. This doesn't, this pertains to all contracts. Therefore, down the line, it'll be a problem. We need to make sure that it is including the contracts that you, that governance could deal with, but not the property contracts. So that needs to be in that terms of reference, excluding property assets.
It's that word, isn't it, contract? The word contract has to be the problem. Okay, 11.1, we're going to take back to Governance and Finance and look at the word contracts in this clause and see what we do...
word contracts in this clause, and see what we do about that, okay? I said councillor, happy with that? Would you like to put your hand up and agree, please, if you're happy with that? I'll propose that we go back to governance. Yeah, informal, informal hand up for going back to governance and finance on this issue. Yep, thank you. So 11.2, that it be recommended to full council that the town council accept the offer of the Borough Council. Again, you've had details. This is 80% contribution towards gazebo and table purchases for community venues. This on the night was proposed by myself, seconded by councillor Birkin. All were in favour. councillor Damon.
May I propose that we act on this and do it accordingly as it's listed in the paragraph, please?
councillor Bowles.
I said I'd second that.
Right, okay. All those in favour for that, then, please? Thank you. 11.3, that the new contract for the provision of bar services, a designated premises supervisor at the town hall, be awarded to J&amp;K event bars down the market, on the agreement that the existing provider be permitted to fulfil any events already confirmed in the diary prior to the changeover. On the night, this was proposed by councillor Hobbs, seconded by councillor Birkin. All in favour? This, this contract was awarded, basically because the, the person who does it at the moment, we feel does not give full value for, for the money. So we decided to award against the person who does it at the moment. councillor Damon.
One of the comment regarding designated premises supervisor, now, I'm sorry, I thought the town council was the designated premises supervisor. If that's not the case, I'm wondering who is? I think it should actually say the designated bar operator supervisor. I think we should have that bit put in to make sure we don't undercut our own staff.
Thank you. Right. Now, we have to have a designated premises supervisor for the bar area, and that Matthew Barton, that's his name, currently. And that's what we're debating, that we, we change the contract provision.
Thank you for that explanation. As I say, I read it as doing away with our own staff.
No, not at all. So anybody else want to comment on that? councillor Hobbs.
Sorry, at the risk of reopening an old wound, governance and finance committee have passed this, this motion, actually. And as the terms of reference stand at the moment, we don't have to have this ratified by full council. On the other hand, it would be polite to do so, so this is what we're doing. We're not currently happy with the, with the supplier that we have. We'd like to go to a new supplier for the bar services. It's as simple as that.
councillor Beck.
Thank you. Can we, can we all know why, the reasons for, why they're not, you're not happy with them?
Not in public, no.
Also, touch. It, it was mentioned in the minutes. Basically, we turned. councillor Leach.
I'm quite happy to go along with the governance recommendation.
Thank you. Seconded, please. councillor Levers, all in favour then, please? Thank you. Right, 11.4, that it is recommended to full council, that council approve the lease amendment, again, was sent to you, for Discover Downham, along with a lease extension, subject to planning permission being obtained and legal terms being agreed. This was proposed by councillor Birkin, and seconded by myself. All were in favour on the night. They're looking for a 25-year lease extension, so they can apply for planning and get a grant at the Discover Downham.
Can I just clarify? They have not asked for a lease extension. It was the governance and finance committee that suggested that at the same time as doing the new lease, that the extension was given, because they've used 10 years of the lease, and that brings them down to 15 years. And in most cases, funding is difficult when you haven't got a 25-year lease. So just to clarify that point.
councillor Levers.
I support Discover Downham totally, as I just said, on a member. But I'm, I'm concerned about the new lease amendment change. The fact that the, will it be a completely new agreement? If not, I think it should be, because of the following reasons. It should run parallel with exactly what we've got at the moment, but the names on the old lease, or the current lease, are not correct. The addresses are not correct. The signatures at the bottom, there should be two councillors and two signatures from the members of the other party. That, that is not correct.
Well spotted.
My suggestion is that we have a totally new lease, and as I said, it follows exactly what they've got on this one at the moment. But could we ask for a contribution from Discover Downham? Because actually, their name is still down as the Downham Market Historic Heritage Society, and perhaps they could contribute to it, as they're the people who are asking for it.
Any comments, please? councillor Damon.
If the proposed modifications go through, don't go through, will the lease that's standing be affected by that not happening, because they can't get planning consent? Remembering that it's a building, I believe, under the age of the town?
Yeah, it is subject to planning permission, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Any other comments on that? Do we have a proposal for that?
Yes, I propose it.
councillor Hobbs, seconded. councillor Leach, all those in favour then, please? All those against? councillor Levers.
Mr Mayor, what I would have liked.
Yeah, because you have, yeah, you've got an interest, yeah.
No, not just that, but I would like, would have liked to asked if the, you know, we could consider doing a new lease, or, because it's going to cost much money. And we, as I just said, all the addresses are incorrect, et cetera, and even the name of the other party is not correct. So could the clerk confirm whether we could go for a new lease, parallel to the one we've got, and ask if we could get a donation or something, contribution from Discover Downham?
I can confirm that the legal name is still the, the long name on there, so it's not Discover Downham, that's their trading name. So I believe that that is the correct name. However, as part of the amendment to it, it would make sure that all of that information was up to date. And it would be myself and the mayor which would sign and seal it. But you're absolutely right, there are some changes that need to be made to make sure it's still a legal document. I can ask for a contribution. I believe, but I may be incorrect, but I believe there's a law somewhere that says they can't contribute to our legal fees, because otherwise it's not independent. So it may have to be a different form of donation. But I may be wrong on that. I'm trying to pull something from the back of my head. But I can certainly ask, and then come back to council.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. 11.5, that full council does not proceed with the proposed twinning arrangement with San Lorenzo Nuvo Council, proposed by councillor Hobbs, seconded by myself. All were in favour on that night. If we need any discussion? councillor Beck? You propose, I'll second that. All in favour for not going ahead with the new twinning? Yep. Lovely. Thank you. Right. 11.6, that the governance and finance committee recommends to full council that the quote from Norfolk Computer Services be accepted to carry out penetration testing as part of the town council's ongoing IT security measures, to identify vulnerabilities, protect sensitive data, and strengthen cyber resilience. On the night proposed by councillor Birkin, seconded by myself, all were in favour. Do we need discussion on this one? councillor Birkin? Are you proposing? councillor Damon? Okay. All those in favour then, please? Thank you. 11.7, it is recommended that full council approves the funding for high-quality handmade replacement curtains for the assembly room, as the existing curtains are damaged and no longer fit for purpose. It is further proposed that the cost be met from the earmark reserve budget originally allocated for electric vehicle charging, as this reserve is no longer required for its intended purpose. This on the night was proposed by councillor Hobbs, seconded by myself, and all were in favour. Do we need any discussion? councillor Damon?
I take it this, these handmade will be in keeping with the age of the building?
Yes, they're exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, the champagne colour, but they're exactly the length and everything like they should be, to enhance the room, yeah.
May I propose that we accept this?
You accept, yeah. Seconded, councillor Levers, all those in favour of new curtains then, please? Thank you. Lovely. 11.8, that it is recommended to full council that additional members of the governance and finance committee be added as bank signatories, and a 10% audit check be updated to allow verification by one signatory and one non-signatory. Proposed councillor Hobbs, seconded councillor Lane, all in favour on that night? Yep.
Just to confirm to council, that I have spoken about this with the internal auditor. Obviously, we have got two new councillors join the council, so maybe they wish to be signatories. But up until recently, we struggled to get signatures, signatories. And although it's not the perfect ideal to have this, the 10% governance checks are not actually a legal requirement for the council, they're a nice to do. And therefore, the internal auditor said that he would prefer that we had at least four signatories active on the account, than have what we have existing to meet requirements. But obviously, if the new councillors would like to go on, that would change, obviously, potentially, how this stands.
councillor Sims?
I'll put myself forward.
councillor Sims, thank you. Right, what do we need, vote? So we want to vote tonight, and this way to go back to government? I've just had a word with the Chair of Governance. Okay, we're going to vote on this tonight, if that's okay, to allow councillor Sims to join us on the signatories. So if we have a proposal, please, for that? councillor Kane?
Can I just confirm that your recommendation is to amend the recommendation by governance and finance, to continue with their two signatures being added, but to add the additional signature of councillor Sims? And just check that that is how the recommendations go in?
Yep. Okay, councillor Kane, third proposal. Yep, thank you. Seconded then, please. councillor Damon, all those in favour then, please? Yep, thank you. Against? Everybody against? Number 12, to consider recommendations from property committee and agree actions. 12.1, to recommend to full council amendments to the terms of reference to include all matters relating to councils' property assets, encompassing contracts, leases and licenses. Proposed councillor Jordan, seconded councillor C-Pyatt, all in favour on that night? Do we need discussion on this, please? councillor Damon?
May I propose this, please, to the full council?
councillor Beck, second. All that, all those in favour then, please? All those against? Number 13, to review the Halloween fundee, and over to our deputy clerk.
You've had a report on the day. It was very successful. There was lots of people here. Lots of people volunteered in the end to come along. Yeah, the sun shone. The kids had fun. I don't know what else to say, really.
councillor Bro.
Yeah, I had a great day. I woke my daughter up, and we volunteered, and it was really brilliant to be part of something, to see so many young, happy little faces enjoying themselves. I just want to say thanks to everybody that worked hard behind the scenes to put everything together and to make it all happen. I was really proud to be a councillor that day and to be part of it. Good day for DMTC.
Thank you again to all the councillors who came and got involved, to all the council staff, and all the councillor relatives, and the working staff relatives who got involved as well, to make it such a good day. councillor Kane?
I also wanted to, I had real fun. I really, really loved the day. But I just wanted to say thank you to the children, because basically, that's what it was about. And they were just so well behaved. They weren't anybody that was naughty. If I sort of said to them, just be careful what you're doing, and things like that, they were good as gold. And they all took their turns on, on the activities. I thought they were, they were, it's really good.
Thank you. Number 14, to discuss remembrance day contingency plan in case of inability to access London Road War Memorial and agree actions.
Yes, hot off the press, the road is open again. So we were waiting for the report of the building inspector for number one, London Road, which, as we all know, appears to be a dangerous structure.
which as we all know appears to be a dangerous structure. We got the email about five o'clock this afternoon to say that they recommend that we make sure that the parade does not go on the pavement next to that building, also down, is it Rampart Hall Street? So what we are suggesting is that we barrier off in front of that building and also along the rest of the road to the War Memorial to force the parade to the other side of the road. It is closed anyway, but I think it is with relief that we can go ahead under those circumstances if, if council are happy that we do that. There was the question mark of the risk assessment and the falling down building potentially, but I think that probably covers us from a safety point of view if we can do that.
Councillor Hobbs?
Yep, just, just to let you know really, I met the, the building inspector today. He was, he was concerned about the building and I think it's only right that we should try and keep people away from it until it's shored up or it's made safe. Thank you.
They are going to do some further investigation of the building and, and put in place whatever they feel fit. So I just think it's sensible that we keep well away.
Councillor Walsh?
Yeah, that more or less answered my question, but you know, if the building's dangerous, they could go down in 10 minutes' time or whenever, so why aren't they shoring it up? As an urgent thing to be done.
Yeah, just in answer to that, they're waiting for further advice from CNC Building Control.
Councillor Levers?
I would just ask, will we have some stewards standing with their backs to the barrier? Do you think we've got enough people to do that, Tina? Because that, I think the long hole is going to stay, isn't it?
So the hole outside the Longarette has been filled in.
Yeah, they told me that on Sunday morning, they were doing their best to get it all done for us. But isn't, how's the lay-by, I haven't been down there, how's the lay-by been filled in? Because they did say that might stay.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether that is, but the, the parade doesn't go anywhere near that bit, so.
No, just, just thinking, we've got to be, have our eyes open.
I think if we've got the barriers up far enough away from the building, I, I don't think there's a need for stewards, but you might think differently.
Okay.
Could I just thank all the office staff for really working hard on this issue? They've been working all last week and this week so far to, to get updates and to try and make sure that that road is open for the town's Remembrance Sunday Parade. Okay?
I'd just like to personally thank the deputy clerk who was working on this on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Number fifteen. To discuss Christmas light switch on, stewarding requirements and agree actions. Over to Tina again.
If you don't mind, Mr Mayor, I'll take this one. So I've sent you a report regarding the Christmas light switch on. You've got an overview of the volunteer support that we've got during the day and the staffing support. Given the current atmosphere regarding the country's national threat level being substantial and the evolving national guidance on event security and Martin's Law, I believe that although I appreciate in previous years we've had minimal issues, we have had issues that myself and the deputy clerk have had to deal with and you may not be aware of, I think this would be the time in order to bring in a professional just to make sure that it goes smoothly. We have less volunteers than we have had previously and we had experience last year where myself was taken out due to a medical incident and that I was taken out for over an hour and a half, which put additional pressure on the deputy clerk while I wasn't available. So I would strongly suggest that you accept the cost of 884 spot 65 excluding VAT to, obviously we can recover that in order to engage SIA accredited security professionals as per my report.
Councillor Levers?
We have underspent on VE Day, so I presume we can take the money from there?
Technically no, but yes.
Any other comments on the extra expenditure and stewarding? No, do we need a vote? Yep, so do we have a proposal for said cost tonight? Councillor Campbell Robb proposed, seconded councillor Levers, all those in favour then please, thank you. Lovely, thank you. Number sixteen. To discuss event schedule and event budget for 2627 in the absence of a community development committee and provide direction to Governance and Finance Committee. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so we've got the events planner for next year, it's very similar to this year in the absence of a, a community development committee. I'm not, we're not proposing anything different and to run things pretty much as we are. We've, we've upped the budget request, as you can see, slightly on most things because things are costing an awful lot more, particularly Christmas lights, I think that's, that's one that we do need to boost up. We'll see how this runs this year with the additional security. It may well be that we might need to enhance that even more next year. So it's, it's worth putting into the budget at least so that that discussion can be had.
Councillor Levers?
Could I just ask, I forgot where the, the grant money goes now, we used to have it on community development. So which budget is it coming out of or is it separate?
I believe it comes out of full council, doesn't it? Yeah.
Just comes out of full council. Okay, thank you.
And you?
Councillors, as I noted in my report, the event on the 21st of the 3rd, 26 is budgeted within this financial year, therefore that 2,000 could technically be taken out of this balance. However, I would suggest you leave that 2,000 in there, given that Martin's Law is coming in and I believe we will have more requirements on us regarding security at a lot more events.
So having seen that, my recommendation to council is that we support this budget with a little bit of flexibility given by Governance and Finance if needed. So I'll, I'll propose that, do I have a seconded? Councillor Levers, all those in favour for that?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Now, because it's 25 to nine, I'm going to jump to the, to number 20 and hopefully we can come back and catch up on some more of that. Number 20, to receive updates from working parties. 21 Jubilee Community Centre site terms and conditions of use, working party. I don't think we've had a meeting of that. No comment? 22 Jubilee Community Centre site business plan, working party. Again, I don't think we've had a meeting of that. Carper orders, working party. Have we had a meeting? No. 24 Grounds Maintenance, working party. We definitely hadn't had a meeting of that. 21, to receive outside body reports. 21, one youth advisory board. Have you got one?
Yeah, I can give one on behalf of yourself and councillor Campbell Robb. There was a meeting today at four o'clock. The youth of the town are working towards an event for the summer. They've put together a survey which they are going to send to the Swan Centre, hoping that they will happily ask for their attendees to fill that out. They're going to send it all to local schools, including out to Denver, Southere, Wimberham and the like. And then they're meeting again on the 2nd of December to come back and assess what that comes, that returns from an information perspective. And as I believe the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, they're coming to present to you on the 13th of January. I appreciate that's going to be a heavy meeting because that is a budget meeting, however, I believe that they will be asking you for some funding, so I have expressed to them that it would need to be a short presentation, but I believe it's a worthwhile one having it at that meeting. Thank you.
And if I could just reiterate, we've got a games evening on Thursday this week, four till six, and again on December the 4th, Thursday, four till six for youngsters 11 and upwards. 21, two, Safer Neighbourhood Action Panel.
Yeah, the SNAP report is for the 13th of October, held at Watlington Village Hall at 7pm. Borough councillor Colin Rose was in chair, Borough councillor Josh Osborne vice chair. Present were Sergeant Mike Hastings, Paula, Paula Gilhooly, quite a mouthful, coordinating officer, and Maddie, our local beat officer. I attended this meeting alone as my partner in crime councillor Val Levers didn't attend for personal reasons. Attendees were informed that interviews had been conducted for extra beat officers resulting in two more beat officers to be located in Downham Market, which is good news, as present officers have been extremely busy dealing with more incidents being reported. An increase from 20 to 37 resulting in a good package of results from 176 patrols taking place. The local officers have been working closely with retailers to prevent theft. They also had a cycle marking event on Friday market and taken lots of opportunities to engage with youths both side, both inside and outside school, which appears to be having a positive effect. It was also reported back that everyone, that 999 should be used if life is in danger and burglary or assault is in progress. 101 for reporting information which is non-urgent, but this service which is overwhelmed with calls and internet is slow, is another slow way of getting action. The police advise the use of Crime Stoppers as your best way of getting the quickest action if not using the 999 emergency service. The reason is that Crime Stoppers is a live feed to the police and is 100% anonymous unless you specifically wish to leave your details. The Crime Stoppers number is 0800 555 111. I brought up a situation and reported to me about abuse from parents picking up school children from Bexwell School. This is in the, is in relation to private driveways on the little one-way road, which is adjacent to Bexwell Road, being blocked by cars waiting to pick up children. One household was verbally abused by one of the car owners when he asked politely to move so he could access his private driveway. I mentioned information from residents relayed to me about their concerns with drugs being used or supplied at a premises in the town centre. This and other incidents reported, including speeding, were already on their radar and I was informed that some incidents had already been dealt with, which highlights the efficiency of our local beat officers, which I thank them for. The next meeting is on the 20th of January 1920, 2026 at seven and it's reported to be here in the town hall. But I spoke to Paula on the telephone, she said she couldn't actually confirm that, but she would confirm it well before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walsh. 21, three, Downham Market and Downham West Joint Burial Board. We have received on our councillor email, councillor Pegg, shall we leave it to that? Councillor Damon? Right. Do you want to, do you wish to tell us the report or?
I'm sorry, I haven't got it with me.
That's all right, we have received it on email.
You have received it, I know you have received it and.
Thank you very much.
It is as written.
Thank you, Burial Board. 21, four, Hundred Acre Charity.
Charity meets within the next two weeks to distribute the funds. We will give a report after that meeting.
Thank you very much councillor Damon. 21, five, West Norfolk Tourism Forum, they haven't had a meeting, no, thank you. 22, to receive an update on the 20 mile an hour zone request.
Councillors, as per the email sent to you by the deputy clerk on the 28th of October, there was a request for a review of signage and also implementation of an extension to the 20 mile an hour zone. We've had a report back via North, oh, from Norfolk County Council and it isn't positive. The cost of extending the 20 mile speed limit would not meet the criteria under our Speed Management Committee. You've had the whole email, but that's the main part of it.
Thank you. Item 23, to receive an update from Network Rail on the signal box.
Again, councillors, you were sent this on the 15th of August, but I was asked to read this out so that everybody is aware of what was in the report. I'll read it verbatim, it says Downham Market Station is managed by our colleagues at GTR. We have raised your concerns with their station manager who was aware of the general poor state of most of the platform fencing. I'd be more than happy to pick this up with GTR stakeholder manager and ask them to get in touch with you directly on this to provide more information. On the refurbishment of the signal box itself, we do have plans to repaint the signal box in 2026, 2027. The delay is down to getting access to the track as of course we can only do this when the line is closed. I'm sorry that this might be disappointing news, but I'm happy to update you once we have firm timeline for the works.
Now go back to item 17, to discuss live streaming in 2026, 2027 and agree actions. To lead on this councillor Julie Pike please.
Thank you. Yeah, we've had live streaming for several years now and I thought it's time that councillors had the chance to discuss whether or not they want it to, to carry on or not before the bud.
Could you put the mark a little bit?
Sorry, before, before the current contract runs out next year. I had a look at other councils, Hunstanton and Wisbidge don't live stream, but Swaffham do, so it's up to councillors to decide what their preferences.
Councillor Walsh?
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see it stay and I remember even councillor Park sitting next to me here, she actually picked up something on live stream and quoted the minutes that it was displayed on live stream and I think it's a very important thing to go back to and actually confirm what was said at times, because when you get away from council, stories change and this, that and the other goes on and I think it's a very good thing to go back to.
Councillor Kane?
Yeah, I'd like it to stay, I think it's good. I know people that watch it and find it very informative and they get to know us as councillors and they can learn quite a lot from it, so I think it should stay.
Anybody else in discussion please? Councillor Damon?
I like the idea of live streaming, unfortunately the LinNews and advertiser can't get it right, having listened to it. They can't spell your name right and they get the actual terms of reference for what you were discussing wrong as well. I'd like to point out, I was not talking about the metal horse, I was talking about the garden feature below the metal horse, which is where the back end of the horse is missing, which I. is missing, which I would like put right by the Borough Council before they lose the contract to do it. Please, thank you.
councillor Diamond, I do confirm that that is correctly written in the minutes about it being the gravel horse.
Anybody else for any more? One other thing, I'd like to thank you all that carried on with the Halloween event. I'm so pleased that it's going to continue and will carry on, thank you very much. Thank you very much, councillor Diamond. Anybody else about the CCTV YouTube? Do we need to put a proposal in then, please? councillor Campbell Robb for a proposal, seconded. To carry on 26-27? Yeah, so the proposal is to carry on YouTube for 26-27, councillor Campbell Robb proposed, councillor Diamond, I think, beat you to it, seconded, all those in favour, then, please, thank you. councillor Diamond? Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Yeah. Right, we'll go back on the list. Yep, I think, number 24 now, councillors' questions and to receive suggestions. No, I haven't got time, 10 minutes. Councillors' questions and to receive suggestions for future agenda items. councillor Betty Moyes? I thought you were doing the count, the scouting.
I was just thinking, so do you have to be on two years before you can be a mayor?
Yes, that's the policy.
You do? So I'm wondering if we can change that, because we, we struggled with mayors and, and stuff and we've got a couple of like new councillors and. Exactly. And they, they might want to do that and I thought, you know, I thought we could propose that anyway.
No, it's the idea of the policy, so you've got some experience under your belt.
Yeah, I get that, but the problem is there's not enough people want to do it and so I thought we could open it up.
Governance and finance will be looking at policies anyway.
Okay, all right.
Yep, councillor Levers?
We've just discussed the, the Network Rail box, I'd like to ask that we discuss joining FLUA, as Borough belongs to FLUA, and it has, there is no commitment from us and it's, I believe the secretary said it's £5 a year, that's all, but we would probably get newsletters which would help with keeping the public informed as well.
Do you have to attend meetings for that? No.
There's no input from us at all.
Oh, right, okay.
Only me.
Anybody else? Nope, okay. Number 25, to note the date of the next meeting, which will be 13th of January 2026 at 7pm town hall. Thank you.